Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the December 1st, 2025 meeting of the zoning board of the town of Austin. My name is Sal Carrera, chairman, and joining me this evening are members of the zoning board of appeals, town attorney, building inspector, and secretary of the town. Please introduce yourselves for the record. David Krieger, member, and Commonwealth member.
Daniel Mullen, secretary.
John Turnquist, building inspector.
Chris Sutana, attorney.
Thank you. We have two hearings this evening. I will read the public notice and then request the applicant or their representative to give a brief explanation of the relief sought. Anyone that has a comment should raise their hand and state their name and address for the record. After the comments are received, the board will try to render a decision this evening. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing of the town of Austin zoning board of appeals will be held on Monday, December 1st, 2025 at 7:30 PM in person at the John Paul Rodriguez Austin operations center, 101 Route 9A, Austin, New York, 10562, on the application of Abel Magana, 512 North State Road, Bright Cliff Manor, Town of Austin, New York. In accordance with the zoning code of the town of Austin, Chapter 200-50, approval of site plans and Chapter 200-41 certificate of occupancy. Members of the public and applicants are here to attend and join the meeting via mobile or if the applicant is seeking a variance for the terms of the zoning code of the town of Austin for two feet along the back area of the site of a parking area already constructed. Major improvements to the site have been completed. The rear parking lot was altered, reducing the side of the existing curb by approximately two feet. The property is okay to that 512 North State Road in the unincorporated area of the town of Austin, New York, owned by 512 North Inc., 512 North State Road, Bright Cliff Manor, New York, 10510, and is identified on a tax map as a town of Austin as Section 90.19, Block 2, Lot 15, located in the general business district. Application materials and plans are on file at the town of Austin Building Department for 1019A, Austin, New York, 10562, or at the website. All interested persons are invited to attend the public hearing and/or send comments by mail to the town of Austin zoning board of appeals post office box, 1166 Austin, New York, 10562. Before we get started, two things I want for the record. One is that I want to acknowledge the receipt of a letter and the material sent by Mr. Davis today dated December 1st, 2025. And this application basically is a criteria for an area variance that this board will have to make a decision on, either tonight or in the future. The zoning board of appeals must consider the following criteria when reviewing an application. Criteria for an area variance. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue of then an area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. This factor is relevant to the decision, but the fact that the difficulty was self-created does not conclude the granting of the area variance. So may I have the applicant and/or representative giving us an explanation of what they're seeking? Please.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jose Calo, CEO of PTO. I'm the attorney for Abel Magana and he owns his lot from the bank. Our owners of 512 North Inc., which as some everybody knows is 512 East Row. Obviously, the address is 512 North State Road. It's a restaurant that we opened a couple of years ago. He's well-known in the community as he also is owner of Terror Rustico. And he's made many improvements and changes there. Likewise, he did the same here. So his intent has always been to comply and work in good faith with the village. This zoning variance is to basically approve what's there already. He had major construction on the site. I was there before, if you remember, you know, it's not like what it is now. He had to do a lot of major construction to the structure itself and the parking area. What happened was in the back of the parking, on advice of the highway person, I think of Mr. Peter, told me by Mr. Peter, he recommended to bring, push back the boundaries, the curb of the back of the parking of the business. It's only a 10 to 12-foot long area. And I notated it with the application, I submitted, and I have a larger map, but it scaled down the area questioned. And the dotted line showed what was there before, where the curb was before. And I could pass it around to make it more clearer. You could see that there's a dotted line that says approximate location of the old curb. And now the new curb extends a little bit more to the boundary, but it's only about approximately two feet at most. That's there already, and it was done because apparently in the bigger survey here, it shows that along there, there's a grate and drain. And Peter, the highway person, informed that we better, if he did that, push back the curb to make it easier for the village to do cleanup on that particular. But that was the whole intention of doing the curb, moving it back. And that's what he did at a great expense. He added, you know, trees and other items there. And that way, he put a door for the village to gain access to that drain.
To the town.
I'm sorry, to the town, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, you know, he did everything accordingly and, you know. So he's surprised that he's, you know, here. I understand that the adjoining neighbor was complaining about some light issue regarding the restaurant. Now that it's an active restaurant, it's open. Here, there's light equal parking. I believe their complaint, which I guess is the basis of the letter that I have read, is that issue regarding the lighting. I believe some trees were taken down that was there before. And that's why they have that lighting coming in, apparently affecting their property. But my, Mr. Magana has indicated that he'll put in whatever trees or anything to block the lighting, if that's the complaint.
The new things I did.
And he did a new fence along the curb there of the parking. So we just want the zoning board to approve what's there already. You know, he's hardworking, he's complying. I remember that guy did 20 years ago, I believe, his restaurant, when he purchased Terror Rustico. And he's a good person, he's just following what, you know, he was told to do. And we just want the board to approve this, you know, small two-foot variance.
Okay. Thank you. I'm very familiar with the site, and I made sure that the members of the board visited the complex to see what this applicant was basically looking for. I did notice the new drain in the back. And also my understanding, Mr. Caddo, can you come back up here again?
I'm sorry.
Sure. Is that the new drainage was put in, the parking lot? Drain also helps the area for the parking and the stream that goes through the site in the back. And I've lived in my house for 55 years, so I know what Briars was before, during, and after. And the accomplishments that I've seen here really excel as compared to what was there before, besides the drainage and the taking out of and trimming of the trees that were there that were basically overhanging on the house that was there. the lighting, and I passed there at night, the lighting basically is facing the restaurant. So it's lighting the parking area. And I guess that would be a safety issue if there weren't any lights out there in the parking area. But from what I've seen at night, and I've drove through, is that the lights are facing out. There are some additional trees that your client did put in, but nowhere near what the original site plan called for in the early 2005, 2007. But as far as I am concerned, from what I've seen here, and this is the first time I've experienced, you know, an applicant for a couple of feet in my 30, 40 years on the board here. But it'll be up to members of my board to ask additional questions. That will get some additional comments for the public that are here or online. So, David, do you have any questions or comments?
There's a couple of definitions to these trees, which is, we're basically here for a two-foot variance. So there's other issues at fault, but I don't think that's what we're here for tonight. The two feet, I have no problem with.
Could you say that again and hear you?
I have no problem with the two feet.
Okay. Um, the only sequence I'm not clear about, maybe, and you can clarify. How did this building come about? Did you receive a plan? Or did the town receive a plan about the parking lot and how it was to be built? And were there any questions raised at that time?
No. There was no site plan. It's the existing.
It's a pre-existing condition, the building was there.
Yes.
The building was completely redone from roof to the basement.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
And a whole new parking lot and the cleanup of the property line in the rear was, you know, part of the complete renovation of the site. Prior to selling it, there was hardly any parking lot there, other than broken up blacktop, a stick fence in the back facing the neighbor in the rear, trees that hadn't been attended to probably for decades. And that was all part of a new site plan of cleaning up the whole area, besides redoing the restaurant as it is, as you see it right now.
I still understand, I understand that the builders of the parking lot did not clarify with you the curb and the details. That's all I'm trying to understand.
That's correct.
So what it seems like, what the applicant is saying is that they're saying that they got some direction from Pete Connolly, the superintendent of highways, as to what should be put there. We don't have anything from Pete Connolly to corroborate that. The board would be relying upon the representation the applicant is making. If he wanted to, we could ask for something in writing from the superintendent of highways, because that seems to be the basis of the justification for why they're seeking a variance.
Yeah. I mean, I could answer to that since I've been there, I've lived there, and I've been to Briars when it was. And the area in the back there, as compared to what it was when Briars was there, the drains that was put in was, if it was requested by Peter, which I have to assume, you know, he's telling the truth, is that they were not gone through the expense of putting the drainage in, redoing the parking lot to the way it is, and also taking out some trees that were basically on town property. Again, as I understand it, because I was there during the course of construction of the site.
So can I say something?
Yes.
So the big tree right on the right corner, very close to the neighbor house, wasn't my tree, it wasn't healthy.
That's on Blue Lantern.
Mr. John said to me, if I can cut it, because I have, I applied to them to trim the trees. So I said to him, well, if I bring the trucks here, why not? Wasn't my tree, was from the town. It was the big one. It was, I believe, was the most tree that gave him more privacy to the house. But it wasn't my thing, and wasn't unhealthy. The guy went there and checked. Now, the highway, when my guy was due the parking lot, Mr. Peter stopped by, he said, that drainage gave a lot of problems to them, because all the doors come from neighbor and from my sides to there, and the length was a little higher. So the drainage wasn't doing anything there. So he asked me if the guy, he can boot the machine in it to do the fish to that way. That way, the water goes to that drainage and keep the drainage clean. And also, when they going back in that drainage, he asked me if I can put in a new fence, can I do a gash? So I did the doors there for them, cost me more money, but I did. So the only thing I did is listen to him, because he said to me, it will help to them people to clean up that drainage there. So that's what the reason, and why I didn't touch anything else, the one that he told me to improve here.
It was a request, it was a recommendation. It definitely helped the drainage in the area. It doesn't happen that often, but, you know, North State Road has been underwater just a few times in my 55 years of living there, where you couldn't even go into any of the stores along North State Road. And it is because of, you know, the river that we have that goes into the sawmill. But, you know, putting that aside, any other questions?
No, 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 I'm very familiar. I've been in this restaurant for 30 years, so.
So you know how it was.
Yeah.
And I guess now it looks much better for all the community. That's what I think of it.
Yeah. Okay, so I'd like to ask people in the audience, that's the officer.
Good evening, members of the zoning board of appeals staff. My name is Clifford Davis. I represent Ms. Miller, who owns the property of Two Blue Lantern Road. I submitted a very exhaustive letter. Mr. Wills, is that correct? I think the issue that you were addressing was, how did this application get here? Because what the applicant has not told the board is that the building inspector has violated the applicant because there is a 2007 site plan. And in the 2007 site plan, the applicant was supposed to comply with that site plan. In my package, I have a letter from an expert, New York State licensed engineer, PE Elliot Senor, who will, after I speak, he will address how the applicant has not complied with the 2007 plan. So the applicant, what he did, and we're not here to discuss the restaurant. We're here to discuss the parking lot and how it negatively impacts my client, because they took down all these trees, they took down all the screening. And as you can see from the photographs, and that's not here, so you're looking at the photographs, I gave you the before, I gave you the after, and Ms. Miller will explain to you. They did it without going back to the planning board and trying to amend the site plan. Now, when you have a site plan, if you want to make changes, you don't go to the zoning board of appeals. You go to the planning board, and they had a violation. And Mr. Caddo was supposed to be in court today in Austin to explain to, you know, to the town judge, why they still have not come to the planning board. And I've spoken with Ms. Adana, and she advised me that they were supposed to go back to the planning board. The building inspector has said that, and that's the violation. So the first issue is, what are they doing before the zoning board of appeals? The zoning board of appeals is a quasi adjudicatory, it's a legal board. You just can't go here to the zoning board of appeals and say, forget about the planning board, we just want two feet. You don't even know what the two feet is. What's the requirement? Did he tell this esteemed board what the requirement is? Well, in the GB zone, what it says is that when you have a commercial property that backs up to a non-residential property of my client, you have to be 20 feet back. So when he says it's only two feet, what he's asking this board is not for two feet. He's asking them for an 18-foot variance, because he wants to be two feet on top of my client, on the property line. So he needs a 90% variance. One, is it a substantial variance? It's 90%. Is it self-created? Of course it's self-created. He went there, he had a 2007 site plan, he had to comply with the site plan, and he ignored it. And that's why the building inspector said, you have to be accountable to the planning board and to this town. And you're in violation, and those violations are in my package. And Mr. Turnquist can advise you, and I hope you ask him about those violations. They have not been remedied. And I don't know any board that would ever grant an approval when there are outstanding violations. So it's self-created, it's substantial. Then you have a balancing test. Why does he have to be so close to my client's property? Nobody's saying you can't run a restaurant. Nobody's saying that he's not hardworking and he's a nice man and everything like that. But he has to comply with the law. The law says you have 20 feet. Now, if he came in to the planning board and he said, I need 20 feet, and, but I'm only going to give you two feet, then the building inspector would have given a denial letter. I don't know. I mean, how many times do you see a denial letter? You always see a denial letter. There's always a denial letter. You just can't come to this board and, you know, I set it forth. It's town code 200-44-A, and it tells you what your jurisdiction is. It's the zoning board of appeals. What is the appeal from? His appeal is that he wants to appeal to you and say, it's only two feet. But it's got to be a decision that Mr. Turnquist made, the planning board made, somebody else made. There's no decision, so he should not be here, and this matter should end right now. There are outstanding violations. Like I said, the site plan from 2007, you know, he's not in compliance, and he modified it, and that's why he had to come back. There were changes made to the gate, there's changes made for the lighting. Nobody's saying he can't operate his restaurant. But can my clients enjoy their house? When you look at the photographs, the before, it was heavily wooded, and my clients wouldn't see anything. Now you took down all the trees, and Mr. Chairman, that was your first reaction about how many trees you noticed were taken down. Now.
No, don't put words in my mouth. I didn't say taken down. They were trimmed and my regulation, okay? Since I live right over North State Road, is that the condition of that parking lot, putting aside this two feet or 10 feet, you know, the trees, the fence, they were, there was nothing left and haven't been maintained for decades. And I even was worried about the trees and the branches going over to the house, that if a branch fell off, it would go right through the roof. So the trees were on his property. And to take away from that problem, he had them trimmed back when he was doing the parking lot.
Well, every, this is in my package, it has the photographs that were before. And you could barely see my client's house. And that's my client's beaver. You know, they're looking out of their, this second floor of the house, and then we see a very big commercial area.
Let me ask you a question with regards to that, okay? Where does your client live?
Where do they physically live?
Yes.
They live in Yorktown, however.
So when you say to this board that it's not gross, but it's affecting them, they don't live there. Is that correct?
I'm going to answer your question, and then I'm going to respond to it. What you're saying is completely irrelevant. And the reason for that.
You're the one that brought it up, sir.
Let me explain. Zoning runs with the land. I could, like, how many times has somebody has come to you and they say, we need this variance because somebody is older or younger or disabled, it runs with the land. So my clients, sometimes they rent it out, they might want to sell it, it impacts their property. They lived there for a time, right now, they're living in Yorktown. I believe her mother lived there until she passed away.
Yes.
And it impacts them. So you cannot, you cannot say it doesn't have an impact, it's their real estate. They could move back there at any time. But as of right now, it's being lighted. So that is an issue that if that was raised in your decision, any port would knock it down. Zoning runs with the land. So again, with the photographs in the package towards the back, it shows how much everything is screened. Then what they did, without any modification, without going back to the planning board, they removed the trees. They cut them back. You know, it's in the package, they did put up a fence, but the fence doesn't block the light from coming into that house.
The light from where?
The light from the restaurant. And there are also lights that were put in, in the parking lot, without any permission from the building department or modification from the planning board. They were just put in.
There were, there were always lights in that parking lot when Briars was there. Well, there were always lights in that parking lot, working or not working in that parking lot. How do you have a parking lot with absolutely no lighting?
I'm going to allow my client to address that. Then you have this drone photograph, which shows how, this is from the applicant, and it shows how exposed my client's property is.
I went through your whole package today.
Right. So all that I'm saying is that on balance, my client, real estate is being injured because it was properly screened. And the code requires a 20-foot setback. And the reason for that 20-foot setback, it's in the GB zone. Now, if they wanted to comply with 2007, they could comply with the 2007 site plan, but they haven't. So they have a choice. Comply with the 2007 site plan or comply with that law which exists right now.
If I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
The 20-foot is a new requirement, not, this is a pre-existing condition.
No, no, no. Let me explain what a grandfathering existing means.
So I think the issue is that what, and the applicant may be able to address this, but two feet is beyond what already, what was, what was existing. So yes, it's two feet off of that. Is it two feet with what the code now requires? No.
Once, if he didn't change anything and was in compliant with the site plan from 2007, we wouldn't have a beef. Once you're looking to change and deviate from the 2007 site plan, as Ms. Adana can attest to, you now have to comply with what the code says now. And you have to put certain number of trees in, and every year, if a tree dies, you have to replace it. And that has to be 20 feet from the property line. And that is what the applicant is doing. So he has to comply with that 20 feet. And if he's not complying with the 20 feet, he has to come in and, 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 and again, this is going to set a terrible precedent. If anybody who wants, you know, to change something comes before this board without it going to the zoning board, if Mr. Krieger said, well, he's only coming in for two feet, the trees are not my problem. If he went before the planning board, the planning board would look at the whole package, would look at everything, and then Would look at everything and then say. Um, you have to go to the zoning board, and they're only gonna look at the two feet. And also, you know, the the balancing test, but the planning board is then going to look at the big picture. So he's got it wrong. He's gotta go to the planning board first, and he's gotta get it denied. And then you you look at the denial letter or the analysis by the building inspector or the attorney. And say, these are the reasons why it was denied, and that is what I'm appealing. Okay, at this point in time, um, my uh, my expert engineer Elliot Senor. Would like to testify by by his own. If if you can let him in.
Um, as it relates to the planning board, before we move on to another issue. Um, it is the the town's practice to have applications come to the zoning board because. Yes, there are site plan issues here, and no one's denying that, and there are pending violations related to the deviations from the site plan. But the planning board cannot modify the code. Only you can grant variances, and so the planning board cannot say. It can only be two feet from the property line, or it can deviate two feet. That's within the purview of this board.
Ho- however, just to add to that. The normal practice is you go to the planning board, and the planning board advises the applicant.
That is not, that is not the case here. That is not the case in Austin. There are a lot of applications where it goes to the zoning board first. Before it goes to the client.
Well, considering the way this application was put forth, there is no site plan before this board. There's no analysis, there's a survey, and with regarding the two feet, you don't even know what's the requirement.
Okay.
The applicant didn't say it.
So I I listened to him, and then I'll take it from there.
Oh, yeah. Good evening, Elliot Senor, um, Officer Gabriel Senor at. North Central Avenue in Hartsdale. Um, so I guess I'm here is that the. The the line that says approximate location of the of the old curb is is hearsay. They didn't survey it at the time. That there was, they existed a condition prior to the current pavement, so I'm not really sure how they. Got that line on there. But as far as, um, just the overall site plan is concerned. Uh, yeah, the parking lot is now just a couple of feet, um, five feet or so off of the property line in places. Um, all the trees have been removed that were required by the original site plan. And as far as the planning board, as far as the parking is concerned. None of the parking spaces in that area comply with any of the regulations from. Uh, the village as far as parking, uh, space size, aisle space, backup areas, and things like that, so. Um, you know, it really does need a new site plan that complies with with the code, just moving the, just moving the. Curb line, you know, without permission, and it sounded to me, uh, as sitting there when what he was explaining, the, um, DPW guy said. The DPW guy was saying, well, can you lower and make this flow better? He wasn't saying, uh, you know, expand your parking lot, put up new curbs and. And lighting, etc. So, um, I'm just here to say that none of the parking, uh, space that is right now complies with any of the. The the village code, the town code. Um, and that things have to be improved. And approved by the planning board.
Thank you. Uh, a question I have for the the building inspector. Are the parking spaces that are lined? Legal parking spaces?
I have to, uh, I have to check the dimensions. The the new ones or the old ones?
No, no, the the ones that are there.
I have to check the dimensions on that.
And.
The backup and so forth with. Uh. I have to go over that.
Yeah, the the dimension, the off, building offset from the building to property line, I think I, I, I don't have it in front of me, I think it's eighty feet. And when you start adding up all of the, uh, parking aisles and parking space widths, you get more than eighty feet, so. Um, just on the surface of it, it doesn't comply, but some of those spaces are only ten or twelve feet long, and the aisle is is less than ten. As ten feet in some cases. Um, so none of it really complies. But I'll I'll leave it to the building inspector to to check that.
Thank you. So, um, he has a CO on the building, is that correct?
On the building, he does, yes.
There's no CO on a parking lot, or you you break it up between parking lot and a building?
It was a separate filing. The building was filed for, the restaurant was filed for. Uh, there's a stair filed for on the side, but we did not file the plan of the parking. Uh, in the beginning, we had gone with what we had, which was the original.
Okay, so we're still going.
So yes, there is a CO on the bill.
We're we're still going, this is a pre-existing condition from basically Briars two thousand seven. In the parking lot, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, if anybody else on.
That was the, uh, parking lot as the as shown on that site plan, not the parking lot as shown now.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah, I'm done. If you're waiting for me.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? You could raise your virtual hand.
There are no hands up, no, no comments from any of the attendees.
Thank you. Davis, again, I I'll be very quick.
Please.
I I think what the building inspector was trying to say is that in two thousand seven, the two thousand seven plan, which is in the package. That reflected, um, what was pre-existing. But what exists now is completely different from the two thousand seven plan. So they they changed it. They never went to the planning board, they never made the changes. And as a result of that, and I think your town council will agree with that. They have to comply with the law as it exists now, which requires a twenty-foot setback. And if they wanna be as close to two feet, then they're asking this board for a ninety percent variance. So if Ms. Miller could address the board.
Sure.
Hi. Hi, I'm Rosemary Miller, and.
Hi, neighbor, Drew Miller, her husband. We've been there forty years, like you said, fifty years.
Yes, from when I was since the house was built. My father built the house. He was a hard worker too. And, um, we've never had any problems with the town classroom. They've always been good to us. Um, we remember when there was just a stream there and rocks, and there was, there weren't many fences. And, um, we got along with the neighbors, never had a problem with the briars, and, um. When they did close up the brook, they had had it, it was great. And, um, there was, there was grass and trees around those great, um, which I guess. Thing of, well, pollutants before they went down the drain. And, um, the trees, even though they looked overgrown to everybody, they they provided screening. And, um, twenty-foot pine trees were planted at one time. And the picket fence was added in addition to provide screening, because when cars pull up with the headlights, they hit the house, and the bedrooms are on that side of the house. It's about fifteen feet from the house to the fence, but there was always. That buffer and that setback from the fence to where the cars parked. Um, up against the beds, I think they might have done angles instead of straight on, there weren't that many. And, um, I know the parking lot was never finished before, and additional trees were supposed to be planted in the past, and there was a lot of. The crazy vines would grow because the brook is underneath the ground, and, um, but it did provide screening, so we barely could see the restaurant. So the only meeting that they had about any changes to this restaurant was about two years ago, June, I think about adding stairs and an apartment or stairs. And we had no problem with that, because you couldn't see it. Everything was screened. And now, you know, that we could see the stairs, we could see the apartment, even the lights from the side of the restaurant, they hit you. Right in the face if you're on the front stairs. And the lights, even though they're pointing down, there were never lights along the fence. There was a big light in the back corner. There could have been some between the briars and the building next door. I'm not sure about that, but there have been trees that have fallen even between those two properties because the stores is done. But still, as messy as it looked, it still provided screening, and, um, because of this grate. The two grates, the one grate in the back corner, um, the picket fence at one time went around it, so sometimes pieces would fall down. But then we would tell the building inspector at the time, um, not this John, the other John Hamilton, and he would talk to the briars and. If they could fix it a little. But, um, but there still was a fence that blended it with the trees, even though it was a mess. It it was screened, so, um, and so my whole question was, when this all started. If they were gonna add more trees and what was like, well, what was going on? I know it's called a site plan. So they they told me they were to follow the the thing site plan. So I got a copy from the building department, and I watched them do everything. I kept calling, and, um. Everything looked like they were following the site plan until the end. When they took out more trees, they took out a few little ones that were marked with green spots, and I know the one town tree by the street was taken out, which is fine. But the closest spot, like right by the bedroom, is really an issue, because if you open up the window, you can see the people sitting in the car. See the people sitting in the restaurant, lights in the restaurant, can we, it's see the people talking. Um, I wish I had pictures to show how close it was, and somebody was that sitting in the car, and like beeped at me, so it's scary, and I was there alone. I'm not there now, but I might make that my permanent resident. I I lived there when I was in high school. Went to Austin High School. My parents loved it there. We never had a problem, and we even, like Abel, we went to to the restaurant many times. And at that other meeting, he said he would break whatever trees or do whatever is needed. I talked to Bill Tomlin at the highway department and asked him if he needed the gate and the fence. Anybody could come through there. He said he didn't need the gate. In order to clean the drain, it gets in two pieces, everything could be taken apart. Um, but, um. We just want screening and a setback. It buffers the noise and the talking, and, you know, we want him to do well with the restaurant, but. I don't know what the zoning codes are for that restaurant case. I want to live there or sell it or whatever. And it it's, it's just noisy, like you, you don't realize unless you live there, you hear the cars, doors opening, closing, you still can hear them. There's one waiter that has a car that's very loud, like eleven o'clock at night. That takes off in the whole neighborhood, she was that. But, um, but that's it. It is, you know, we would like to have it done the right way, follow the law, and. Have some screening, and also like pollutants, I heard from the parking lot. Like runoff from oil and gas, that's not running through like grass or anything before, it's just going straight off the blacktop into the drain. I mean, before it was protected with the grass and the trees, even though it looked messy. Um, yeah, oh, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
You see, my manager just wanted to.
Just just briefly, um. I I have the impression that, um, counsel, Mr. Davis, I believe is last. Trying to make, trying to imply here, or not even playing directly, in terms of say that my client sidestepped the whole procedure. To do this. No, we didn't sidestep any anybody or anything. We did everything properly. We, you know, he 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 invested a lot of monies. You're right, this is not about him being a nice guy or hardworking. But he did do what he needed to do. He has another restaurant, does the same thing with the other restaurant. He complies. He 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 calls a building department, and we're here because of the recommendation of the building department. Um, to file this, uh, zoning variance. And and Mr. Davis, service state, you know, where I should be at prior prompt today. Okay, you're not.
Please address the board.
No, uh, thank you. So, I wasn't there, I'm on trial, week-long trial. With another jurisdiction, not this one here, regarding, um, um, zoning issues. And you're right, counsel's correct. Zoning board deals in variances. We're in the proper jur-, you know, a a place to do this. And we explained it properly. We're not sidestepping anybody. We're doing it properly. Okay, and it's not a ninety-foot variance, a two-foot variance. Okay, so that's all I have to say in response.
And the distinction is it's two foot over what was previously existing as shown on the plans.
Correct.
Versus two foot over what would be required by the code now. So those are, those are the two different ways of thinking about it. This is a complex situation as to what. Non-conformity, if anything, is being increased within what this court board's jurisdiction is. But those are the two concepts that that you're looking at when you're thinking about this.
You know, lastly, say that the criteria that you must follow, we follow, you know, it's. It's gonna be a tremendous hardship on my client if this board where he's actually remove. Um, um, the the curb. Um, the, there's no detriment to public interest. Um, two foot is minimal, doesn't approach on the neighboring property, and as you heard here, I think the the main complaint. Is the trees, the noise, a successful restaurant. Before I was there in Briars, you know, it was dying down towards the end. It wasn't as successful as it is now. They don't like that, that's, you know, that's not our problem, and they're using all this as a guise to to get their way. Anyone else in the.
Yeah, can I say something?
I just give you a name and address.
Drew Miller. This is Miller's husband. I've lived in this town my whole life.
Address.
Where you live now?
Oh, I live in Yorktown Heights. I own property all my life. I own multiple properties in Austin. I've been part of this community a long time. A lot of people know me. I know who you are too. Alls I wanna know is, being part of the community, people can just do what they want, or do you have to go by the law? Like I said, my wife was there one night when I wasn't there, and she looked out the window, and somebody beat the horn because they didn't like her looking out in the parking lot. I could raise my voice, and this is how it sounds in the parking lot to the house. We're just saying the bedrooms are right there. I don't know by you showing up on the property if you understand what the problem is.
I I I understand that.
If it was setback over this way where the pro- where it was before, fine. You wanna bring it two foot by the front, who cares? Nobody's there, the driveway.
Yeah.
I just don't understand the psychological.
Did I speak on?
Please do.
Rosemary Miller, again, two, two blue actually moved. Um, the two foot that's there is right by the bedroom, but they left a wider space of it's. Fifteen to twenty feet by the road, by two with the edge of road. Why didn't they go two feet over there? You know, the whole length is supposed to be the same. Along the fence. I mean, how it was before, it went in and out, it was wasn't a problem, and then the branches that were trimmed off the twenty-foot pines, so. There's no screening there, yeah. So if some type of pines, the tall pines can be planted without those. To provide screening, it would work, but right now, there's no dirt. All the dirt is covered with rocks, you know. You need dirt for things to grow also, and space. I tried to prevent all this from happening in the beginning, but you know, I wanted to stop it.
From a legal standpoint, Mr. Davis again, directed. The board has to also look as to whether there are alternatives, and the board, as the zoning board of appeals knows. We have to give the smallest variance possible. Are there alternatives? One alternative is that not only do they not get the two feet, but they have to move it back. You know, and comply with what the planning board is going to do. So I haven't heard any testimony as to why they need this two feet. Other than that it will be quote annoying. Or cost money to move it back when they should never have done it because it wasn't in compliance. With the two thousand seven site plan. So you can't come before this board and say it's gonna cost us money when you didn't comply with the plan, and you just did. When it's going to be to the detriment of a neighbor. If this two feet were somewhere else, we wouldn't be here tonight. But it it's right on top of them. You shouldn't have a commercial parking lot just two feet away from.
It's more than, the parking lot is more than two feet away from the house.
At this location.
At the ho- at the whole location.
No, I believe this application.
I understand about what they're requesting, but the cars that are parked facing that house, okay? Basically, those headlights hit into that new fence that he put up. If you take those parking spaces and bring them back. Into the middle of the lot. People that'll be parking there, every headlight would hit that house more than what it is right now.
That's why you need trees.
Okay. That's, I understand that, but that's our decision. Okay? Well, anything else, sir?
Well, again, what I I I would just reiterate what your town council was saying. On the issue of pre-existing use in the building inspector. It's our position that what was on the two thousand seven plan was pre-existing. After two thousand seven, they completely changed the game, and when you completely change the game, you now have to comply with what the law is now. Which is the twenty-foot setback, which I attach as part of my package. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience have any say with regards to this application? A question I have of, uh. The building inspector, um. Were any violations given to the applicant with regards to removal of trees and or cutting back trees? That are on his property?
No, we we did not give a violation for that. Uh, we did meet, have a meeting there with the arborist. And, uh, they, we did not. The the trees that were cut down were dead. They were trimmed to to. I'm not the arborist, but I did meet there while he was there and listen. Uh, there was one that was dead down by the road, but that was obscured. And that was agreed to cut down. It was also hazardous to the wires and everything.
So, uh, I've listened to all of this testimony and. Like Mr. Miller knows, I've been living there for fifty five years, so I know this site inside and out. And, yeah. What I was listening to is that, you know, this. Applicant basically cut down anything and everything that they shouldn't have done. It's trees on his property. And if you did the right thing, which you did and brought an arborist there, and what he did. Was legally done, that. Really has no bearing on how many trees were there, the dead ones he took out. And the ones that, and there were many that were overhanging over the house. He cut back. He has a right to do that. Is that correct?
Yeah, he, he, that's what the point of the meeting was, was to trim them and uh, they were supposed to, the project might take them, but they have to branch out.
Okay, but I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing. The vote. And the public hearing is closed.
Fall in favor on closing the public hearing.
All, I. So unanimous, the public hearing is closed. Okay? Then as. Was discussed in the beginning, the criteria of an area variance. Whether an undesirable change will be produced or in the character of the neighborhood. Or detriment to nearby property will be created by the granting of the area variance. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. This factor is relevant to the decision, but the fact that the difficulty was self-created. Does not preclude granting the area variance. Okay, so um, I'm gonna. Ask this board, uh, I'm gonna come up with a recommendation. And you can just say, yay or nay. Okay, uh. I, I'm in favor of granting the, the variance, the application. That was brought to our attention. Um, with the scenario. That the applicant has to uh, install. Whether it's enough time this year or early spring, um. Fast growing albatites along their whole back piece of that property. So that. In the very near future, since some of these albatites, and I'm not an arborist. But I would request that a fast growing screen, green all year round. Would be planted besides the four or five. Pine trees that he currently has in place. So that the whole length of the area. Will be completely screened. From the restaurant. As was previously done with the trees that were there, even though most of them were dead. And should have been, you know, taken care of. And he had every right basically to trim them. And to take out the dead one. That is, you know, my recommendation that is brought for this uh, very complicated um, zoning variance.
I, I would agree with that. That's a, I have a point of question here though to the council. Um, I'm. The lawyer representing the complaint uh, says that we may not. Be acting correctly on this, and I would like your opinion on it.
Only this board can grant a variance. The planning board cannot grant a variance from the provisions of the zoning code. This is complicated by the fact that there was a site plan on file.
And I'm seeing it right here.
Yes, that there are violations related to compliance with that site plan. The applicant has indicated in the past that they were going to go back to the planning board. That as of yet has not happened. If they were to go back to the planning board, the issue of scre, screening would absolutely be addressed before the planning board. So there is an overlap in terms of what the two boards are looking at. You're looking at the variance. For the setback and certainly screening is a factor.
That's the biggest factor.
Exactly. So.
So if you, if you grant this with the uh, scenario that he has to put in, current arborist, okay? Screening that will cover up that whole length. Of that site should circumvent any of the problems that are associated with this or the two thousand seven application.
I mean, that's not a determination I can make.
So, I mean, they're, they're here.
What your board is, is considering.
As far as I, I, I'm looking at this a little differently than most others. Is that if this was not an application. That should not have been in front of us, it wouldn't be here. You would have said, or someone would have said to this board, they have to do this, this and this. It can't come to you. That's not the case. We are now, you know, discussing this. I think that the biggest complaint here was the screening. And that's why I asked whether or not he had the right to go take care of. The trees that were on his property. And I'm very happy to hear that, you know, our building inspector took an arborist there and they agreed to what he had to go do. And he did it. I recommend with this application in front of us. That whatever necessary screening, and I personally feel such a habit at my property. Albatites that screen in, I can't see my next door neighbor in the backyard. Because of the trees that I planted. And I think the owners of that property have, you know, the right to ask for that. And I have no problem in granting this application with regards to putting up screening. Along that whole length of the parking lot in the back.
What I.
That's what you're hoping on.
So what I would also say is. I think if that's the direction the board wants to go, there should be some sort of enforcement mechanism. Because this issue with the site plan and the screening.
So I would give a timeline is that whether or not he could get it done before the winter, okay? Or definitely by early spring, depending on when you could buy the trees and plant them before the ground freezes.
But that, I guess the question then becomes what happens or what is the penalty if he does not? Because these, these issues related this to the site plan have been existing.
But then, then I would take this, you know, this, this variance away. And let him go back for his two thousand seven. Site plan approval.
So the, the variance is only valid if the screening is installed. By, I mean. Right. So I mean, we're talking about the spring at that point.
I think we really are. Listen, if you can get a landscaper, there's machines that dig holes. And put the trees in. You don't have to dig it by hand. You could put it in now or spring. I, I'm not a landscaper or an arborist. Uh, I'm just saying that by, yeah, you want to date, May thirty first, twenty twenty six. So you wanna nip that some, so.
That's realistic. I think that's realistic.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know, uh, the weather's changing.
Yes or no, yeah.
Well, I'm wanting to say before I say, I'm, 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 I go along with this is that. I've been to that site a couple of times. And I, I, there clearly has been some miscommunication, but they've done a fine job. In that they're agreeable to do what we're asking them. Uh, it's the best we can do under what you say is a complicated bit of uh. But they have tried to work with the city on this parking lot or any, I think is inadmissible. I mean. I, I just can't see where. Uh, we're not representing uh, correctly the town.
If, if anything, per the area variance, the criteria for the area of variance. Is that, you know, it's not changing the character of the neighborhood. Uh, and it's definitely improving what is a, 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 a constant problem of flooding in the area. With the new drainage that, and the new parking lot and the picture of the parking lot that the applicant put in. So taking that. All into consideration is that I think everybody wins. And during the course of this whole hearing. There was never a mention of what is gonna cost him to go do this. So I don't think that is a criteria. To fall back on is that it only costs money. That wasn't brought up at all by anyone. So that's why. I'm in favor and it's unanimous with regards to granting this and putting in screening. With trees fast growing so that, you know, by May thirty first of twenty twenty six. You will have whatever is necessary of every five or eight feet, trees that can grow and protect the house. And the privacy of the tenants that are there or the current owners that may go back and live there. So.
Can I suggest that we put that the screening be um, signed off on or um. Consent it to by the town's arborist or landscape architect? That that's something that, that, that they, you know, using your recommendations as a starting off point. If they think there's a different type of tree that would work better or, you know, if it's gonna grow too wide.
I'm in favor of a fast growing evergreen albaty. Because I've had a, a lot of experience with it, other than what they put back there right now that are gonna be growing. Into the fence and over the fence.
Right.
Very shortly.
Exactly.
So, you know, whoever recommended that, and I'm not an arborist, but whoever recommended those. Wasn't the right thing to do. You gotta bring it out further so they have a chance to grow with its sun. Sun is very important to albaty. I mean, I, I could see they wanted, you know. Ten, twenty different types of pines put back there and when they recommended, you know, trees back there. I'm not an arborist, but I think a fast growing, but a benefit of the owners of the house. Not something that's gonna grow three inches a year. You got albaty that are screening that could grow three feet a year.
Yeah, initial height of the tree.
It's not, uh, minimum six feet.
Good point.
Yeah, I think the minimum. Okay, all in favor?
Well, so, so, okay, so do we have a motion and a.
Yeah, a motion. Excuse me, we're taking a vote. Sorry.
Motion and a.
Motion, yeah.
So who made the motion? Chairman? Is there a second?
Second. Third.
Second.
Okay, unanimous.
And given all the things you've said, yes.
Yes. Uh, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The owners of uh, forty five Gordon Avenue here. Please come to the front. Thank you. Okay, we're going into the second uh, hearing this evening. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing with town of Austining. Zoning Board of Appeals will be held on Monday, December first, twenty twenty five at seven thirty P M in person. At the John Paul Rodriguez Austining Operations Center, one oh one Route nine A, Austining, New York. One oh five six two on the application of Caesar Pente forty five Gordon Avenue, Brightwood Manor, Town of Austining. In accordance with the zoning code, code of the Town of Austining, chapter two hundred and twenty five. Supplementary regulations was applying to all resident districts, paragraph A accessory buildings. The applicant is seeking a variance for the terms of the zoning code of the Town of Austining. In order to build a shed on his vacant lot setback fifteen feet. The property is located at forty five Gordon Avenue in the unincorporated area of the Town of Austining, New York. On the tax map of the Town of Austining, section ninety point fifteen. Lot two, lot twenty nine, thirty and thirty one in an R ten, one family resident zoning district. The property is made up of three parcels of land located on a corner. The residence sits rated on lot twenty nine with no available backyard and two adjoining vacant lots legally pre-existing. Additionally, the Town of Austining unapproved paper road separates two of the parcels. Application materials and plans were filed with the Town of Austining Building Department. All interested persons are invited to attend the public hearing or send comments by mail. With the Town of Austining Zoning Board of Appeals, Post Office Box eleven sixty six, Austining, New York, one oh five six two. Yes, sir. Please give us your name, address, and tell us what you're doing and what you're asking for this evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Please come in here. You can come, you can come. Thank you.
Um, we are family, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, we are family of five. We just bought the house. And we don't have, we don't have any storage. So, um, that's why we decided to build a shed, but where, where it used to be a pool. It used to be a pool. I just measured, it's like twenty five from the street. And like twenty five, twenty feet uh, from this, from the other, other one, with the paper, yes. And so we're asking to allow us to keep building because it stopped right there.
Okay, so a couple of questions, sir.
Yes.
Uh, uh, how long have you owned the house?
Divided in March of this year.
This past March?
Yes.
You've done a very nice job with the place.
Thank you.
It looks very nice.
Thank you very much.
Definitely. Uh. Wha, what possessed you, even though you're a new owner, uh, to take on your building this yourself?
Yes.
You're building it yourself?
Yes.
So it never occurred to you to call the building department to see what you're supposed to be doing? Whether you can do it, whether it's legal, do you need a permit?
I did, I looked online and it's, I could not go over twelve feet by twelve and fifteen feet high. It's, so it's, I didn't need a permit. And so that's why I did it. But when Mr. Um. He came over to pass inspection of, of apartment downstairs. So then we talked, but then, and he said that I need, I need this.
But, uh, do you intend to put any utilities out into this shed of water, electricity?
No.
Nothing, just dead store.
Dead store, yes.
Okay, board members, David, any questions?
And you considered all possibilities and that was the only area you found suitable?
That's the only spot that we have. And we have so many trees, uh, and.
There's steep slopes on your property? Oh, there are hills?
Yes, yes.
There's no flat area that would be easy to work on?
No, no, that's the only spot that.
There's a little mountain.
Yeah, yeah, there's a big mountain.
Yeah.
No, I, I just want a point of information about Olive Street. I mean, is it ever gonna be, I mean, it's the most unusual lot I think I've ever seen at this board.
It's a paper street probably.
It's called the what street?
It's a paper street.
It was never built with.
It was, yeah, it was laid out on a map probably a hundred years ago or something. And just never developed into a road because you also have to remember like lots were much smaller.
Yeah.
One of those subdivision maps, you know, what their houses probably three or four.
Right.
Of those lots. So, um, the, the, the maps and the streets as they were contemplated during the subdivision process. Is no longer really peaceful.
Yeah. Is there any possibility for these owners to, for the town to deed it over to the, I mean.
I mean, if they wanted to approach the town about it, I'm sure the town board would entertain it because right now. If it's town property, you know.
Really hindering three lots. Okay, just a point of information for you folks.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I haven't, I haven't been here as long as our uh, head of the board, but this is the first I've ever.
but this is the first I've ever seen it, but okay.
There's a a number of paper streets throughout the Town of Austin in areas that you would never believe.
Yeah.
Uh, there should be a street there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, not saying anything, but members of the uh
I make a motion.
Hi, I just have a question.
Sure, your name, please.
Oh, Adalina Rapari de Benedetto. I live.
Where's the, what's the address?
Six Hillcrest Drive.
Okay, you're, oh, okay.
Off of River Parkway.
Oh, okay, right, right, all right.
Okay, so how big is your shed?
It's ten by twelve.
Ten by twelve?
Yes.
Yeah, it looks so fancy with the door and the window.
It stopped right there. Uh, I know it looks ugly right now, but I'm gonna put a siding.
Ugly, you can see it, but it's gonna look like.
I I I live right up the street, on Ryder Avenue, um, and, you know, I passed by because of the application. And I'm in real estate, so I I do a lot of driving around, but it fits in, in my opinion, so perfectly that I thought I was always there. Uh, until, you know, I got this application.
Yeah, me too.
Question.
Yeah.
I was surprised that he needed a variance to build a shed.
Uh, it's because it's on the front of a piece of property.
Oh.
That's why.
I see. So if he was in the.
That, right.
You wouldn't.
And and if he was, if he was, yeah, a certain amount of footage away from the adjourned pieces of property, then he could go build whatever he wants, okay, uh, at the site. Um, but because it's on, th- these three lots are all front pieces of property. There's really no backyard, and that's the reason why our esteemed building inspector picked this up and just brought us here for additional work, uh, but it is what it is. Okay.
But even if it was the back of a house, but it's on a road, it has to be.
It depends.
Has to be in so many.
It has to be a certain amount of footage from your neighbor, okay? And what the size of it is, and then we go by the building code.
Okay.
Okay.
And just remember, yeah, don't, just remember that different areas of the talent have different restrictions. It's not, it's not across the board.
There's no hard and fast rule, so if you're ever contemplating a shed, go talk to the building.
All right, I did, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there anyone else?
Anybody else? One second, I want to ask, say one thing. Is it okay?
Yes, please.
That tree, you have a violation for a tree that you cut down on town property.
I called so many times and nobody came, uh.
I also called and I was, I was told I was gonna get a call back from the.
You didn't call the right number then, because I would have come right away. You should fix that. There's a violation, but you cut down a tree on the town. We could replant something there. Did you replant anything?
No, because uh I I wanted to put the ever, uh, wood.
Evergreen?
No, yeah.
Evergreen, but we needed a, we wanna make sure that was the first tree to plant.
All right, so give, give a call to the office, and I'll gladly meet you there one day, and we'll resolve the issue.
We're gonna make him an arborist before the. Anybody online that wanted speak?
Is there anybody on Zoom?
No, no hands up.
Okay, may I have a motion to the, to the public hearing?
Don't move.
Don't move, second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, my recommendation is to uh approve the uh application to continue building. But my recommendation to you is, you know, he's a very, very smart man. Just, you know, call him and tell him what you're gonna be doing, so that he can give you advice of what you should do and what you shouldn't do. And with regards to the tree that you cut down, put in evergreen. I love albaty, as you know, so. Okay, uh.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Don't move.